All right, it's 5:30, September 26, 2017. This is our final budget hearing. I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the invitation and the pledge. Who would stand?
Father, we are thankful for this opportunity, Lord, to gather together again as a community of concerned citizens and government, Lord, to be able to take care of the needs of this government. Lord, we ask your blessings here tonight. We ask you blessings of wisdom, the decisions that are made, that we make them according to your will. Lord, we pray that you would be with our first responders and our military, Lord, just keep them protected as they're out and about doing their jobs. We'll be careful to give you all the thanks and the praise for what you're going to do through us and us. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda, clerk of court Barry Baker.
All right, Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, I'd like to open up the Swanee County final budget hearing for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. It's a proposed millage is 9.000 mills, and there is a proposed final budget of $81,532,467. Where you have a rollback rate of 8.954 mills, and the proposed millage rate is a point, is a 0.51% increase from the rollback rate.
All right, sir, is that it?
All right.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Do I have any constitutional officers that wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have any outside agencies here that wish to present or re-present? There are none county departments. Yes, sir.
As a prolonged discussion that we've had discussing fire equipment, in your packet that we handed to you will be a couple of documents for us to discuss fire trucks and tankers, engines and tankers, as we've had in previous discussions. Recap, you'll see, number one, that engines are the majority of our workload. They run the majority of the calls that we have within our service. The tankers are supplemental, so at this time, it's the recommendation of fire rescue that we deal with the engines at this time, and we worry about tankers at a previous budget Number two, discussions between difference of heavy-duty chassis and a standard chassis. We can go into that discussion in a second. A recap of revenue streams, our current contingency, and our funding for the payments for the equipment in question. You have your 1.125 in contingency, then you have your $300,000, that's usable, revenue for the purchase of new equipment. Purchase options, number four, we have, we looked at many different options, what would suit best for us. And when we looked at those options, we looked at what revenue we had, or what funding mechanism we have to meet our need. So as you can see on item number four, you have a five-year term with a no balloon and a 10-year term with no balloon. So with that being said, Mr. Harris, go ahead.
Commissioners, can I chime in here for just a minute?
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping that each of you have the paperwork that I gave to you earlier that has the breakdown of these scenarios. One thing that we set out to accomplish was cleaning up this question that existed previously about a buyback. I've shared with each of you that that's an entirely different definition and interpretation of that term that the finance company and the manufacturer had used than the application that we were customarily used to using when we were doing an outright purchase of graders for the guaranteed buyback price guaranteed by the manufacturer at the time of our purchase, where we would turn those back in five years, we knew that we were going to receive from them an established amount that was established at the front end of that contract. This company utilizes that term entirely different, so in order to make it abundantly clear, when we had these scenarios formulated and put on here, I think for each of you, I drew a line between the column that says ownership and the column that says turn-in. Turn-in is essentially a lease with a balloon payment at the end, that's a balloon for the third-party finance company, not for us. What I'd like for you to do is concentrate on the line, the column that says ownership, which is an outright purchase with no balloon payment at the end of the term. So what you're really looking at here, in that left-hand column on this paperwork, is a finance mechanism. They've offered very low interest rates in these various scenarios, and I'd like to have you concentrate on the purchase of five engines rather than a lease. We ran these in five-year terms, seven-year terms, and 10-year terms. And the bottom line, if you look in the top right-hand corner of each of these scenarios, you've got the actual annual expense, and that's just boiling down all of the information in those two pages. My handwritten notes up there in the top right-hand corner show you the actual cost per year. If you reconcile that with your sources of revenue that the chief was just talking about, you've got 1.125 million in contingency, you've got an additional $300,000, and we've explained that to everyone. What that $300,000 is, is the difference between what we budget in revenue and what we actually generate in revenue. So if we don't spend that money at all this year on anything, that $300,000 will add to your contingency so that this time next year, you'd have a little over $1.4 million in there. But we know that we have a need for the engines. The way that this thing has been outlined for you, I would like for you to concentrate on the difference between a five-year and a 10-year purchase, and then we can come back to any other questions that are generated from that. But clearly, the five-year purchase at $478,000 a year over a five-year timeframe exceeds the $300,000 in rollover. The only one, seven-year doesn't do it either, it's $354,000. But if we finance these trucks over 10 years, we can do that at about $260,000 a year, which is below the $300,000 additional revenue that we're generating each year over what we're budgeting in revenue. And I think I've told each of you that over the next 10 years, that $300,000 is going to increase because our population increases, the number of businesses increase, the number of homes increase, so your assessments will increase, not only to residential, but your costs for coverage for fire on your commercial properties will generate more revenue as We went back and looked at the history of the fire contingency. It's clearly increasing each year, and I don't have any reason to anticipate that it's going to drop over the next 10 years. So we tried to come up with a plan that would meet what, that would address the comments that we heard from most of the commissioners. We want to protect the contingency because we believe that at some time in the future, we're going to need to build another fire station. So this scenario protects your contingency, but more importantly, it adds another $300,000 to it. And I say that because if we were to order these five engines before October 1st, when they're expected to go up 3%, and that's not because of us, that's just because of the industry, if we order those, they're not going to be here until August or September, so our first payment will come after the next budget cycle, which means this $300,000 that you're looking at will be added to your 1.1 million. Your contingency will be larger next year, and we'll have the fire engines ordered if we go with this 10-year plan, and we will be able to pay those without drawing down anything against the contingency going forward. And then I think that we're all going to realize that over that next 10 years, those revenues will continue to grow, will always be within an amount without touching the contingency, but will continue to add to the contingency because the expense for those engines is not going to exceed the amount of additional revenue that you're going to generate.
Could I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
These fire engines that we're discussing right now, so they won't be in until 2018, and when they come in 2018, that mean that the first payment will be due back in October.
It'll come after October.
After October. Of 2018.
But we have to order these things so far in advance in order to receive them. I mean, this is the same thing that we run into. If you recall, we, the board approved the order of those, our dump truck replacements months ago, and then we added some more to it, but this is just the nature of this industry.
I have a question. What does each individual one cost?
Each individual engine?
$459,000, I believe.
$459,000. If you bought one apiece, $459.
Okay, so it's the same numbers.
If we purchase on this scenario, they're $439.
I was going to say if you, right, the $439, you get the discount. Okay. Let's go ahead and figure it out.
Yeah, well, it'll be actually December.
And then they're due a 3% price increase October 1st.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, nothing would be required as a down payment, a percentage down, or anything at the time you place?
They have a number on here of...
About $20,000.
Is that what it is?
There's no, there's no prepay upfront. There is zero, that is your discount. That $19,000 is your discount. That is not prepay upfront. There is zero upfront. Your first payment is not due until October or until December.
You get a prepaid discount for not prepaying?
That's not prepaying. That's their prepaid discount. Their language is different. That's basically a discount for a group purchase.
So up to five or?
That's purchasing at five.
At five?
Yes, sir.
Is anything a little bit less or not?
Anything a little bit less.
You know, like if you get four, or three, or...
It will be different. Yes, sir.
That's per unit?
Per unit.
Nineteen, it's 19,8 prepaid per unit.
Yeah, and that's not a prepay, that's a discount.
A discount?
Yes, sir.
So it's $100,000 if you're doing five?
Yes, sir.
Of discount?
Of discount.
Yeah.
Yeah, our purchase price will be $439,184.
So what you're then asking for tonight is, it's not going to change our budget, the way we're budgeting now. The money's going to continue to go into the contingency. You're asking for authorization to order before October 1st.
That's correct.
And what would happen, would we would create a expenditure line through finance for that payment amount at the end of this budget year? That amount would be rolled into your contingency, and you would establish a new amount for the following year.
In fact, when we finish this item, I'm going to be asking for board authorization to go ahead and place the order on the two ambulances that y'all discussed previously because the same increase will occur unless we do that before.
Do you have, you say there's a 3% increase on October 1st. Do you have that in writing from them? Because I'm not seeing it on here.
No, it is not in here. There has already been a 3% increase that they held because of the timeframe that we did these quotes. They stuck with their pricing, so we've already been taken out of a 3% increase on what we have here, and they are having another 3% increase coming October 1st, as same as the ambulances. A lot of the, a lot of the equipment that will be supplied with the ambulance, chassis, stretcher, things like that, have a 3% price increase come October 1st.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I did notice one thing, and concerns me on pricing qualifications. This lease, or this is a proposal, a lease for the payment stream indicated above, hang on for a second, where was it? Signing this proposal under rate expiration, does, signing this proposal does not lock in itself, lock in your rate, which is a concern for me. Is there any information, did they provide any documentation that said this is the rate you will get up until October 1st?
It will not exceed the numbers on these charts.
This, this projection is because it was given at August 31st, so they are projected high. When I spoke to him on the phone, we were looking at interest rates somewhere around 2.94.
I'm not worried about the interest rate. Well, I guess maybe I am. This is the interest rate?
This is the projected interest rate based out of timeframe. When we lock it in, you will have a new sheet that says what your actual interest rate will maintain that entire time. It will not exceed what you have on your sheet here. It's projected to be lower.
When we originally spoke to them, they knew that we had to go through budget workshops, and they were, like anyone else, they were trying to forecast on where they thought interest rates would be at the time that we finally come to some conclusion. So very likely, it's going to be some percentage of points less, with some percentage of something.
I know at the last budget workshop, we talked about looking at five-year-old leased trucks that were coming off lease. Did we not do that, or?
The only way to do that, I shared this with Commissioner earlier, is the same way that we shopped, that we shopped inmate vans, that we shopped the four-door truck that the extension office needed. If you give us that direction, we go out and go shop, and it took us about three years to get that four-door truck for Catherine. We can do that. If the board chooses to do that, we'll go shop and use trucks.
My only concern right now is that, at the rate that we have the fire assessment set at, and from the direction I've seen from the board so far, that that's going to probably continue to be that we kind of got a used truck budget as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I don't know that I want to go all the way into leaving our contingency with $40,000 a year. That's my opinion, but I'm sure other commissioners have other opinions, so I'm willing to listen to everything.
Can I make a, just a brief comment? I think what staff has struggled with is trying to speculate on how much contingency the board wants. I mean, we've got 1.1, and we're trying to demonstrate that you'll have 1.4, and staff is chasing an unknown goal associated with a contingency line.
For me, it's not the contingency, it's the rollover amount.
Well, that's probably a contingency.
I know that, but I'm saying I don't want to see that number getting into a place where we're obligated year after year after year to make a payment on something where that one's disappearing, because if there's shortfalls to be made up, they're going to be made up out of the contingency, which will start eliminating that. And we've identified over the past several budget years that one of our main concerns with retention has been pay, and we've addressed it every year for the past several years, but we still don't have it competitive to the private sector, and we know that as a board. I mean, that's, you tell us what you're losing employees to the private sector at $20 an hour, and even with the increases we've made, we're at what, 13, 14?
14.
So I mean, a dollar increase is not going to keep the retention, I wouldn't think, for $20 an hour. So I see, again, next year, the retention being a problem and coming back and saying we need to increase, and I see that as a trend until we kind of get that set, and it just, it just worries me, because my heartburn is I don't want to raise fire assessment. So I don't know where the balance is there, but this puts, for me, in my mind, it puts me on a path that we're going to be put to a situation within the next three to four years that we're going to have to raise it. And I know it's, the comment's been made before that that's inevitable, but it's not inevitable for me. I don't want to, I don't want to go down that road if we don't have to.
When you talk about comparison versus private sector, if that's going to be one of our issues, we're never going to get there.
Oh, I know, but, but every year, we've tried to make it better, and we've either got to stop that if, and be just settle where we're at if we're going to start making big purchase increases.
I think we need to look at maintaining, or getting to a happy medium, which I think we're doing, and when you look at comparing us, a county agency, versus private sector, you're basing that versus an EMS service as a whole, not fire rescue service. And you need to take in consideration, or we need to take in consideration, that when our package of insurance, of state retirement, high-risk retirement, things like that, is part of our package, it's not just that dollar amount. So we have other means, once we get that dollar amount to a happy medium, I feel that we will be compared, comparison to other areas. And I think that the direction the board has chosen this budget, I think we're getting to where we need to be.
Commissioners, I think that, you know, we just have to take this thing one step at a time. Clearly, we can't fix everything in one fell swoop. That's why we took these tankers completely out of here. But you've got two pieces of equipment that run all day, every day. That's an engine and an ambulance. Outside of that, if we don't have any fire stations, if we operate it out of a tent, we'd have to have personnel, we'd have to have engines, and we'd have to have ambulances. And this, this is a request to put us in reliable engines and deal with tankers some other day. And I don't disagree with you for one minute, Mr. Chairman, about the need to continue to increase our salaries, but we can't fix that today.
No, no, I just, I just, I know the amount, the cost on the tankers, and looking at, looking down the road on the tankers, unless you plan on talking about them in year 11, we're going to be in the same boat next year or the following year. I mean, yeah, it takes care of it this year and maybe next year, but at some point, I don't, without raising the assessment, I don't see the population boom catching up with the cost to get us to where we need to bring the tankers online. We're either going to have to raise it, or we're going to have to tap in to general fund dollars to keep going in the direction that we're going, and I've expressed to you my concerns on raising it, but I'm interested to hear what anyone else has to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe, I believe that we have a need that will come about more so in the future for additional services added on the north end, northeast end, northwest end of the county. We've discussed this about the expansions that we're trying to get going on with the interstates and the interstate exchanges, and my fear is, is that when we lock ourselves into this much of a growth, and I'm communicating this because we've already communicated this.
Yes, sir.
I'm communicating this to the board, that when we lock in ourselves to a, to a payment, that we do put ourselves in a precarious situation when we have to expand because we will have businesses like hotels that are looking for proximity of fire stations, restaurants that may be looking for. And since we don't have anything north of the, in reality, north of the tracks, the question is, is it going to come sooner or later? I don't want to, I don't want to hinder our ability to grow. I do know we have three fire engines that are, that are old, and two that are relatively in good shape. I also understand that buying, purchasing, replacing every one of our fire engines would allow us to be able to have some reserves. I have heartburn over doing that because I don't want the payment hanging over our head every single year. And as the chairman said, it may back us into a corner. It may not. There's a lot of ifs out there, and those ifs are, that's speculation, and I too would be interested in what the rest of the board would want to know, to, would think as well.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What was the contingency in the rollover, say, five years ago?
Contingency five years ago?
Anybody know? We ran that. Have you got the copies over there?
Yes, sir. Contingency for the last...
Just go ahead and pass those copies out.
Now, you got, you have taken into consideration, five years ago, the fire assessment was $35 a household.
Forty-five.
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 And then it went, two years later to 75, or a year later to 75, and then to 100. So the contingency has grown, but it's grown due to the fact that we raised...
Was there ever a rollover, though? Was there a management of monies that way, or?
I don't know. I think my first year on the board, the board voted to increase it to $75, so I...
Due to the fact that we increased, we added two fire stations. We had to have a funding mechanism. We increased two fire stations, one in Welborn and one in Dowling Park. So at the time, our assessment was $45. It was increased. I share a comparison of Columbia County has five stations, and theirs is going to 227. Ours is 100. So I think we're doing a lot better job, bang for our buck. We're giving the citizens more bang for their buck than any other county around us. So when we compare what we do to other agencies as a comparison, our fire assessment's $100, and Columbia County's is 227, for the same service, actually less of the service because they only provide fire. But when I came in, and the purpose of building this contingency and being conservative on a budget was for this reason that we're talking about today. Providing better equipment to our citizens, keeping the service that we have going. We've talked about a fire station north of town multiple times. That's a new service that we're going to have to provide, and we're going to have to find a funding mechanism for. My recommendation when we build that station is to finance that station. Instead of depleting all of our contingency to do it, let's finance it over a timeframe, because we're not going to move in it and only last two years in it. We're going to be there for 10, 20, 30 years, however long this service lasts. So we need to provide for the service that we provide today. We need to, you know, take care of that before we move looking forward. That's why we said tankers can go to a different year. This is a workhorse. This is the truck that runs to house fires, brush fires, cardiac arrests when the ambulance isn't there, vehicle accidents that are on fire and people aren't trapped. This is a workhorse of your fire fleet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fleming.
I've, I listened to two comments, and my take on this if, you know, there's a lot of ifs out there. We don't know, you know, what tomorrow may bring, what tomorrow may hold. I'm going to have to, I have tendency to agree with the chief, you know, the fire chief. I think he knows what he need. I know we supposed to, we are the good stewards of the county's finances, but we don't know, we don't know whether, if we may need this contingency, the monies that we're discussing at this time. I say we need to move, move forward, and when that time come, we just have to deal with what we're dealing with. That's my take on it.
All right. Well, I got... Go ahead, Mr. Sessions.
Just looking at some of these numbers, if, if at the end, let's say we go with the 10-year thing, you've got 1.2425 million you're going to look at to start with. So basically, at the end of 10 years, with the rollover coming back, you getting back 40 grand a year, you know, and it's paying for itself, at 10 years, you're going to have $400,000 in contingency left over.
Additional.
Additional. I mean, you're going to have your 4.2, your 1.425 depleted, you're going to basically only have $400,000 in your contingency, because, no, I take it back, I take it back, you're right.
You added...
I take it back. You're right. You're going to have 1.825 million. I apologize.
If we don't touch...
That's if revenues don't increase at all.
If revenues don't increase and everything remains the same. Now, if you go through a scenario where if you bought one a year for five years at that, the high price, you know, not the discounted price, and you get them all bought within five years, and then you start throwing your $300,000 a year back at it, at the end of 10 years, you'll have $2.288 million. So, at 10 years, we're going to be a million dollars above where we would be leasing or buying five at once. If you, if, I just ran all the numbers and that's what I came up with. But, so, you know, I know we need equipment. I'm not saying that. And I know we need to take care of our, the people in the county. But if you extend it out to 10 years, if you go ahead and bite the bullet and, and, well, and not buy them all at once, you buy one a year each year, and then when you've got five years, you've got your five pieces of equipment. But then you've got five more years of not buying anything. And so now you've got $300,000 a year rolling in, which is 1.5 for the next five years. So, you come out about a million dollars higher in 10 years, if I'm correct with my numbers. So, it's just another wrinkle or way of looking at it. And that's the way I am. I look at it different. But I'd love for Nina to sit down with me and run the numbers. But that's what I got just now.
And I understand that at the end of, when you look at that five-year engine, you're going to have engines that are 25 years old, because we have engines that are 20 years old now.
So, how many 20-year-olds do you have?
We have three.
Okay. So, you get rid of the first one the first year, second one the second year, third one the third year. So, how many 17-year-olds and 15-year-olds? So, you know what I'm saying?
We're going to be dealing with 10-year-olds at that time, and we're required backups, and we have zero backups now.
So, how many do you need for backups?
With five stations, I'm required two.
Okay.
What's the increase, you think, if we went that scenario, that fifth year, that engine instead of being 459?
Add five years times three, so three times five is 15%.
So, you're going to have a greater, right. So, it's going to reduce some of this, let's just say I reduce this $2.88 million. You're still going to be better off money-wise if you run it like that. And I understand the age of the equipment. So, it's just my way of throwing something different out there for people to think about. I'm kind of like, oh, here we are at the 11th hour, and we're trying to squeeze this in and get it done. Maybe we can make it a budget amendment in the future and think about this a little bit longer. That's my, my take on it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of things, and kind of working backwards, what Mr. Sessions is talking about. Sounds good. Problem is, you've got an aging, deteriorating fleet. This whole discussion began because of the high maintenance budget. Y'all wanted to cut his maintenance budget.
I don't believe the board has asked to cut the maintenance budget. I believe that was brought up from the fire rescue.
Well, it was an issue. I won't say y'all wanted to cut it, but it was an issue. Y'all wanted to look at it. Y'all asked him to come up with a plan. He's come up with numerous different scenarios for you to consider. I think it's, you know, you're going to have to do it. You've got to have backups. This equipment runs seven days a week, 365 days a year. And a lot of people, they say, well, we see them going by. But if their house isn't burning, or the woods around them aren't burning, and the house is threatened or anything else, nobody thinks about it. All of a sudden, your wife, husband, someone in the family gets in an accident, has a heart attack or a stroke, you don't think about EMS service either. If you have a special needs child, nobody thinks about them either till they have one and have to deal with it. You know, and y'all brought up an issue of looking at buying some of this used equipment. Folks, I worked for, retired from Jacksonville after 38 years in the fire service. Trust me, when I went on that job in '74, I transitioned from a volunteer into the paid service, some of our equipment, well, they had retired. Y'all think this is funny. They didn't retire in Jacksonville, and I'm pretty sure I'm right on the date, but I'd have to check. They didn't retire the last horse-drawn fire truck in the city of Jacksonville until the 30s. Now, they had motorized apparatus. They bought the first one, I think, in '01, is when they started getting the motorized apparatus. But the used equipment, Jacksonville in '74, the usable life of a fire truck was 20 years. And that's what they, the politicians over there operated under. That was their theory. Trust me, a fire truck don't last that long. A fire truck, if it's, depends on where it's located and its responses, you're doing good. If you get a heavy-running station, that fire truck ain't going to last five years. You're going to run the wheels off of it. And trust me, I know the people in Swan County won't believe this. The roads in Jacksonville might be paved, but they're bumpier than some of our dirt roads. And you do wear out the suspension on these units. But going to used equipment is not the way to go. You cannot rely on it for any length of time. The plan that Chief Summers has come up with, the 10-year program, you get your five engines, he can roll, his front, most are the newest three that's currently frontline units. As these others come in, he can phase them into his, his backup units. And if Mr. Harris plays the lottery and wants to donate his winnings to the county, you could buy a station, but you wouldn't have to buy an engine because you'd have your third spare sitting there that you could put there. I'm just picking on your end.
I agree with you. I mean, that unit would be perfect for, as a backup then.
Yeah. That's, that's where I'm looking. I'm looking at it from a practical standpoint. And what Chairman Gamble was talking about with the, in the future, is saying if we just spread this out over five years and everything else, you better be looking at tankers. Because fire, everybody heard of the fire triangle? Fuel, heat, and oxygen? Well, we, other than using CO2, we don't have a good way of excluding oxygen from a fire to put it out. Removing the fuel is not always feasible. That's what forestry does when they start plowing a line. The only other thing is your heat. And what do you use to reduce the heat? Water. If you can't get the supply of water there when you need it, that tire's not going to put itself out. It will eventually, but it'll use all the fuel up. So, you're still going to have to look at tankers. And not increasing the fire assessment, I think is penny-wise and pound-thawlish. From a political standpoint, nobody wants to do it. I understand that. And if you're talking about somebody who wants to be cheap with a dollar, I'm him. And when you start spending all this money up here, I'm sitting there saying, whoa, wait a minute. But I haven't seen a whole lot of budget packing going on. Go look at Jacksonville's budget, if you want to find that. I don't see it in this particular or in these past budgets that I've seen on here. And y'all have done a good job. And so, I can't complain about that at all. But I think you need to move on this. He's presented you with a plan. 10 years, you own these engines. The future's going to change. You're still going to be looking at tankers. If you delay it a year, go look at the tankers he's currently using. Now, if you want to see an example of equipment that you can't really rely on, go to the City of Live Oaks Fire Station, look at their engines. Their booster tanks are shot. They're all leaking. They fill them up almost every day, have to, because they're leaking so bad. I'm saying it's the booster tanks. That's generally what it is, but I haven't looked, called on it to see if it was the pump leaking. I don't know. But you're to that point with the engines that you currently have.
Mr. Hancock, I appreciate everything you've got to say, and I hate to have to cut you off, but our budget meeting's running into our regular meeting.
That's fine. I just...
And I, I understand. But in all fairness to the board, and correct me if I'm wrong on this price, but this is a $2.25 million purchase total?
Yes, after payment.
Over 10 years? Over 10 years. And I know y'all have worked hard on this, but I saw it today for the first time at 1:00. And I'm, I'm just, with my stance that I've taken so far, just having a few hours to go over, I'm not ready to jump on. And if the rest of the board is, we'll go in that direction and we'll move on and get past it. But...
Mr. Chairman, I will say this. I do think there's a need. He's obviously presented us that, and I personally have seen some of our trucks in Columbia County getting worked on, I think two this week when I was over there. So, obviously, we have a repair issue or cost of that. So, I'm still open. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Richardson and Mr. Fleming and math that Mr. Sessions has done. I don't think that we don't need to do anything, though. I mean...
No, I don't think anybody agrees that we don't need to do anything.
Yeah, we need to do something. And we need to take care of our community and our people, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to move forward.
All right. Well, let's, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to chime in too, because I have a couple of questions.
All right.
I don't quite understand Mr. Sessions's math, and I'm willing to, you know, 103.
Time to run it down, I'll put it on the spreadsheet.
I'm looking at a week costing us potentially $68,885 if we were to wait to make a decision after October the 1st, and we decided to purchase all five of them at the rate you're going, it's going to cost us seven, almost nearly $70,000 if you're saying they're going to go up by 3%. So...
I think it's funny that they picked the October 1st date, which is our budget year date, to say they're going up. So, I'm wondering if that's a set and stone.
I'm sure they'll do that on everybody. Yeah.
So, going back to Mr. Sessions, I was looking at purchasing them outright, one a year, five years, without going into any payments. And in five years, we'd be digging into, with the current, with no additional revenue, $300,000 added every year to our contingencies. In five, on the fifth year, we would be already into general budget to purchase the 10. Our general, yeah, our general budget to purchase the 10.
So, you're saying if purchase one a year outright right now at $459,000, when you only have, so we'd be digging into our contingency?
In five years, you would take out all of your contingency, and you'd be getting in, getting into your, and my concern is, I don't have a problem with purchasing with a, with a payment. I have a problem purchasing five of them with a payment because next year, you may be coming back saying, we need tankers. And now we have to come up with the money to buy tankers and, or at least one tanker or two tankers. So, that's where my concern is. I would rather see three of them purchased, replace the ones, that's still putting three of them into reserves and giving us five pretty good engines. And then that way, next year, if we were in a situation where, and I know we're not going to get the volume discount, we're not going to lose that much either.
Gentlemen, I'm in the what-if business.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my take, excuse me, chief, my take on this, if we buy them one per year, after five years, you're going to be starting all over again. I'd rather we get them all at one time and be done with it. Instead of purchasing one this year and the next year and the next year, you're going to start all over again. You're never going to get them complete, set of our engines.
I think after five years, we would have five years where we wouldn't have to purchase any of them.
Well, if you did it all at one time, you got them. You're just done with it.
All right. What's the wishes of the board?
I say motion to approve on the 10-year.
Well, in a hearing, we're not calling for a motion or...
No, not for discussion. It'd be for, to make a budget amendment.
This would be to establish the expenditure line for that equipment. That's all that we could do at this point.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, Mr. Sessions. I'm just ready to move forward with it.
So, we establish that we can discuss the details.
Right.
At a workshop, let's say.
Mr. Chairman, my other question was, how much, you've, you've requested a $75,000 budget for maintenance. Do you believe that $75,000 on a purchase would be the, that we could, we would be able to hold to that $75,000 a year for the next 10 years?
I think we can reduce it for the first five.
If we can average it to $75 a year, $75,000 a year, then that would be, this is good.
Yeah. I feel very confident just staying within that budget with purchasing this equipment. This is your workhorse fleet. It goes to everything that you have. The 20-year-old trucks that you're running hard all day long, you're fixing them as soon as they come back. As Mr. Hale said, they're, they're sitting over in Lake City at the repair shop, replacing front ends because of your dirt roads, the conditions of everything that we're dealing with, you're repairing them constantly. The pumps are in need pair, repair of some of them. So, our plan is to, staff recommendation, purchase five engines. It's going to take eight months to get them. At that month, at that time, your engines that you're using now are eight months older, and you've put eight months more repair into them. You surplus what you can at that point. Your units that are frontline now go to a backup fleet, which you need to have. And as we said, if we open up a station north of town, we can utilize one of those trucks for that station for the first year or so to keep the cost down. And this will help keep your service that you have today running smoothly, efficient, response times down to a minimum as possible, keep your costs down, and provide an efficient service for your citizens. That's what the staff recommendation is at this point.
Here's where we're at, fellows. We got, we're in the budget workshop. We're going to establish whether or not we're going to fund this line or not. Even if we don't fund it, the money's going into contingencies. If down the road this year, we decide we do want to fund it, all it takes is a budget amendment to fund it. We're not voting on whether to purchase this in this budget hearing. If y'all wish to discuss that in further detail at the end of the board meeting tonight, we can. But as far as time goes, we need to go ahead and to decide whether we're going to fund it or not fund it, or pass the budget with it in contingency and address the funding source later. I don't mind adding this to an additional agenda item tonight's meeting and us carry on the conversation at the end of the meeting. But we're getting caught up in the details, and all we're looking for is whether or not we're going to fund it or not.
If we do say we're going to fund it and raises that later, is that going to...
All, all we're doing now is either establishing a funding line or not. Even if it goes into contingency tonight, if we decide two meetings into the new year that we want to fund it, it just requires a budget amendment to come back and fund it. So, it's not end-all of end-all.
That's what I said earlier.
I put a recommendation out there that we, we establish an expense line within the fire budget, place the $300,000, or at least the minimum of the 260, because that's what we know the max is going to be if we do five engines. So, we place $261,000 in an expenditure line. And then when we revisit this, we have the funds sitting there to move forward.
There's no, there's no expense this year. So...
The issue is the order. If you place an order, you need to have the money identified in your...
Well, you can have it identified in either your contingency or in a line. Could you not? I mean, I think we're getting, we're getting way off track here because it's, the, the purchase of it is not, we're not, we're not, we don't owe them anything until next budget year. We're just deciding whether or not we're going to establish a line. In this budget hearing, we're not calling for a vote to go ahead and approve it. So, what's the wishes of the board as far as funding it, leave it in contingency? And let's move on to the next couple of items.
I say we fund it, Chairman. I...
I got one to fund the line.
Well, that's to create a line. Well, that's to create a line for.
Create a line of, what, $300,000?
I'd say put 261 in it.
261.
With the rest in contingency.
With the rest in contingency.
And if we choose to do this and don't do anything, what happens to that line?
That money will roll.
Rise in contingency.
I'll, I'll say goodnight then.
I got two.
We're just creating a, just requesting to create an expenditure line in machinery and equipment. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I need one more to create a line.
And if we don't create the line, it's just all stays a contingency, right?
All set it to contingency.
But we can also come back later and.
And, and do a budget amendment.
And, and discuss it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Same either way.
Yeah.
But if you don't have the line, you can't order the, the pieces.
And that's why I wanted to, just in case we decide.
And is the October deadline the end-all, be-all? I mean, that's all they're going to, they're going to go up 3% for sure.
Well, I know the ambulances are, from the conversation I had with them today, October 1, they're going up 3%.
One last question. So if we did do the line for the 261, but we decided to take a course of Mr. Sessions to purchase them one, but we don't have enough of that line for that, would it just come out of contingency? Is that all doable is my question?
Yes.
Yeah, but I wouldn't recommend.
I understand, I just, I'm looking at options, because I feel like we said, we all feel like we need to do something, we just don't know what we need to do.
Yeah.
I'm just.
I've got a recommendation, because I, I agree with the chairman, we need to move something. I think what we need to do is just back away from this, adopt your budget, and then staff will wait until a commissioner brings this back.
Sure.
Because we've, we've provided all of the information in the world that we can possibly provide to you. And at this point, I can't think of anything that Mr. Summers or I can provide to you that we haven't given you. So I think at this point, we're better off just come back some other time, let the commissioner bring this back up, put it on the budget, and just deal with it then.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
On a budget amendment, what's the advertised timeframe? We have to advertise for that.
You know that off the top of your head, Eric?
If we do a budget amendment, what's the timeframe that we have to advertise for it?
Probably a couple of weeks.
I concur then at that point.
All right. You okay with that?
Yes.
All right, that seems to be the wish of the board. You can, well, I know we got the, the, we will have a section for public comment after the department heads are going on, but go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, my concern is, I think we need to make, give, give the line that, that we need, so we have it. And there's no harm in that, and if y'all decide to get the fire trucks, then you can save 3%. It needs to be done now, so you can save taxpayers' money now, because if you can down the road, you're costing taxpayers more money. And fire trucks are important. You never know when you need them. When you think all you need is a, is an ambulance, oh, you need a fire truck too. So, I mean, and we as citizens don't know that what, what is all in town. When you need them, you need them, and you want them to be able to go and do what they need to do to service this county. And please don't get canned down the road, and just give, give the fire rescue the line that they need, so you can, we can order the fire trucks and, and worry about the budget, next year's budget. You've got the money now. You need to take care of this. It's important for everyone. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I had knowledge from everybody that we were going to accept Mr. Harris's recommendation, address it at a different time. Any other county departments that have anything that needs to be addressed?
Mr. Chairman, at the sake of extending your meeting, and I hesitate to do this, in the workshops, the board said that you wanted to go ahead and purchase two ambulances. I need authorization to go ahead and place the order.
Do you need that in the work, in, in the hearing, or?
Your line has to be established for that acquisition.
We established a line.
Budget hearing.
We established a line for the ambulances, did we not?
I think so.
I thought we did.
I thought we approved, I thought.
We talked about two and, two, two and.
I thought we approved two ambulances.
Or two this year. Next year will be.
It was two a year for three years.
Yep, two, two and two.
We approved two ambulances this year, two ambulances for the next two years, so a total of six. So it was approved to create a line for, off the top of my head, I think the payment was somewhere around $144,000.
Yeah, it was, there was, there was a line for the leases, or there should have been.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we did that.
Do you still need something with it being there?
Want to do it in your regular, regular meeting, then I just need to, all I need is a consensus at some point before we leave here today to get the order placed.
Departments, we had talked about economic development and.
That's true. The position for the market director in economic development is going to require about $9,000 or $10,000 more, because the interviews were held, the decision was made to hire someone from, that already works for the county. That person would come out of my office. The net effect to your budget is zero. It's a matter of moving money from the county administration budget, a sufficient amount, I would say $10,000, I think it's closer to $9,000, to satisfy that need. So it would lower that amount in the administration budget.
So we'd be taking $10,000 out of the administration budget, adding it to the economic development.
Administration budget.
For the purpose of the split position between TDC and economic development.
Correct.
I'm fine with that. We got two.
Three.
Three.
Out of the total.
Not to leave y'all out, but we got three.
We heard it.
The three and a half, four, four positions in there. I'll get with you on the actual individual that's leaving that office later, and we'll make the adjustment in that particular.
So minus 10 out of yours, plus 10 to economic.
Only thing I had as far as, I guess I should have mentioned it during constitutional, you did hear me say, I'm sorry, that we did, there was board consensus on, on that line for the 10,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I spoke with the sheriff about that additional funding we were putting into his budget for the smart cop system. I think it was 280,000 or 57.
287.
I'm, I'm not advocating that we, that we don't make that purchase and give it to him, but instead of having it in his budget, can we create a line within the board's budget? And my reason for doing that is just so that it doesn't increase his budget by the 257, so that next year, it doesn't come back to us that we're reducing his budget. I would just rather keep it clean.
He's not in that contract directly with him, the smart cop, so he wants his check next month. I think he has the money to sign the contract.
Can, that, we can't make that work?
I don't know if smart cops can go to the board as a contractor, and I don't know. They're wanting to leave your smart cop money in their budget and control it.
Not control it. I've, I've spoke with you.
Smart cop contract is in the board's. It comes out of our contingency.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Chairman, and just that, you know, they're, they're giving us a, a good, a good deal on the, the recurring costs, I'm sorry, the, the maintenance fee.
Uh huh.
And, and actually, he was wanting to sign that contract, you know, to, for, you know, to get the software. So, but I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it, to me, it, it doesn't really matter if, you know, whether it.
I don't want to hold you up on it, I just don't want it, I didn't want it next year for us, because.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Next year, I plan on reducing your budget by that 257,000, and I didn't want that to create an issue next year.
Yeah, I understand. Yes, sir.
That's, that's pretty much all I was getting at with it, but.
They're actually getting 287.
Right.
So that would be then, Hill West for his monthly, so it's not going to get bogged in in his monthly distribution.
Okay. So you got it figured out then?
Yes, sir. We talked with Michelle, and she was going to pick up the check Monday.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's not adding a, a budget line, an additional amount of money to his budget, that's just taking the money he's got already available to him?
It's, it's, everything's the same.
That's what I wanted to know.
I was going to throw a monkey wrench in there, but if y'all got it figured out, we'll leave it alone.
Chairman, I have one thing to bring up too.
Go ahead.
I do want to bring up something about the extension program. There's a position being defunded in the, in the extension program. And the soil conservation district in Swanee County has given money to a project to be done, and they've requested that some of the monies from the defunded position go to match the soil conservation money for improvement as far as agronomics and agricultural awareness in the county. I know the extension office has already agreed they're okay with doing that when they defunded it, and I'd just like to make a line item to move the $5,000 over to the extension.
From contingency.
Right. Well, actually, it'll be, it'll come out of that defunded position.
Oh, okay.
So basically, we're not going to lose any money.
Funded position.
Sir?
A portion of the defunded.
A portion of, right, it's not the whole thing, just a portion. So actually, the county will be in better, better shape. We could afford the five, no problem.
I'm fine with that.
Anyone else?
I just don't exactly know what that, but, but since we're on the subject, I guess.
Well, it's about a 20.
I know it's about $20,000.
It's about a 20-something thousand dollar deal, and we're going to take five out of that that's defunded. It's going to be less pressure on the county, basically.
Okay, so basically, we're giving around 15 or so thousand?
We're going to get that back.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just move 5,000.
Just move five of it.
Into the extension.
Right.
To help them, or to match them on what they're putting into that project.
So we're not transferring the whole entire amount that we saved?
No.
No, no, just 5,000 out of the 20.
Is there, just a question about that. I know, having talked about this position, you know, we have people who are able to do the work that that position was expected to provide for on a regional basis, and we have people in-house today that are able to do that work. I, I guess what I'm saying is, is why take all that money and just take it away from the?
No, we're, we're not, all right, let me, Catherine can probably clarify. We're not really taking it back. It's still going to be extension money, but it's going to be part of the extension money that'd be, that we're going to still give the extension office, but they're going to have to move some things around on percentages of paid employees to make it all work. So we're not going to take the money away from them, but we're going to take five of that defunded and just move it to another location within extension. Catherine, if you want.
So the bottom line won't change. It'll just, what'll happen is, is the university, instead of the portion that the, that the county normally paid, the university will step in so that, that that person then becomes 100% state-paid, and then the portion that the university paid will still continue to come, but, from the county. So the bottom lines won't change, the salaries won't change, but the portion of who's paying what, that's what changes. So hopefully, that makes sense.
Because we've kind of gotten behind on the portions on.
Like some are 60-40 and some are not.
Right, so it'll change those to be more in line with the 60-40.
I just want to make sure.
That's correct, yes. So, but the, but their salaries, it's not that it's increasing the salary, it's just who's paying for that.
Okay.
We're going to go meet with Nina to even all that out.
Okay.
Okay, so the 5,000 then will go to the extension, and the 15,000 is going to stay.
In salary.
In this, in the salary line of your budget.
Correct, correct.
All right, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, you got a consensus there.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know where this goes in, but I would like to make mention of a couple of things.
Okay.
The added contingency that I'm looking at. So I hope this is the right place for it.
Yes, sir.
Branford was given an opportunity to purchase additional land on the backside of their Hatch Park, which, if you know, Branford Hatch Park is their recreational facilities, six to seven acres, is that correct?
Over seven acres.
Over seven acres, I thought. They agreed to do so. The expansion works with Parks and Recreation's plan to expand parks in the county, and this does so at no additional cost to us, by helping us, by them expanding their parks, or at least no additional annual cost. I believe that we can help them accomplish this expansion with some money from contingency, and I'm asking that we set aside $50,000 out of contingency to help them with that, with that plan.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Richardson, excuse me, but I have a family member that's in critical condition. I leave. Do you have anything else for fire rescue?
You, Mr. Summers is on for staff reports tonight, but I told him that he had somewhere he had to be. Thanks, sorry, Mr. Summers.
It's good, thank you.
So you're talking about setting that aside for the, they've already purchased the land, I believe, and you're talking about to aid them in park improvements?
Of whatever, however they feel like that would be best served. I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Charlie or not, but.
We can do it from here. We're expanding, we're including, relating, and additional lighting and fencing, and whatever else we need, and we would talk with Rex about getting it by.
Thank you.
Again, I say, this expansion doesn't cost us any more money than we already are providing for them on an annual basis.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm all for it. I think Branford could stand some more, more help with their parks.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. I, I look forward to partnering more with Branford and expanding our, our, our reach down there to, to help more than what has happened in the past. So I think you have three there, so that would reduce our contingency.
Thank you.
By 50,000.
The second thing that I wanted to bring up was something that, it's very minor, and it could be something that's enveloped into the budgets, and we could minimize it, but I'd like to at least have the funding set aside for it as a line item. We've talked about Rancheck Community Center being the only county-owned community center in the, in our, in our county, and I believe that we have responsibility as a county to that community center, and if you go into that community center, you find it with, at times cobwebs, a lot of dust, because it's got a concrete floor, and tables and chairs that just are hideous, torn up, and the leftovers from 1960. And I'm asking simply that we allocate, I don't know how much it'd be, but I'm, my guess is, if we can allocate $5,000, this is after discussing it with Mr. Scott, about $5,000 for flooring and for the tables and chairs, and hopefully, we won't need it, but all of it, especially if we can move some tables and chairs over for some other places that are getting new ones.
I don't, I don't have a problem entertaining that discussion at a board meeting.
Okay.
And, and looking for funding, but I don't, I don't know enough about it right now, just to be honest with you, to, to want to have them create a line for it.
I'm okay with that. I wasn't sure if it'd be best placed in this meeting or not.
You got one out of two, just tuck your tail and go.
You got the big one.
Yes, ma'am.
We currently give the town of Branford 20% of what we spend on recreation.
Yes, ma'am.
Add that to that line as a one-time.
As a one-time.
With town of Branford being in charge of overseeing the ball field and all that.
Yes.
I'm not Greg, but.
I've had a couple conversations, conversations with Mr. Daniel, and the way I perceive it is it's a one-time. The way I perceive it is it's a one-time contribution by the board. And he's expressed to me that their town council's going to just seek out some advice from Mr. Scott and Parks and Rec, but it's their part, their responsibility. That, that would be accurate and fair, wouldn't it? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right, any further county departments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to make a comment. Apparently, we're going to be forced to make some repairs to that bridge on 164. I don't have any idea yet what we're going to have to spend on that. I just want to comment on that. We don't have a line for it, but we're going to have to establish some type of expenditure line at some time in the future. We're still trying to reconcile that with DOT and all the parties that are convinced that we need to do something before DOT tears it down and rebuilds it. So I'll have to bring that back to you. I just want you to be aware of that.
But you're, you're not asking us to set a dollar amount, not, you're just... If push comes to shove, and we have to, I don't think anybody's got a problem probably just addressing a budget amendment and funding it at that time.
Keep the roads open.
Anything else from any of the department heads? All right, this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Lawson. Public comment, I assume you mean anything we wanted to talk about?
Well, related to the budget.
Related to the budget.
Yeah, we're in a budget hearing now. We'll have public comment again once we get into our board meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Seeing none at this time, we'll close public comment and...
Close public hearing?
Okay, the comment section. At this time, does board wish to advise of any millage rate changes? Nine mil seems to be a happy medium for us. I'm fine with staying there. We got some anticipated changes coming next year with the additional $25,000 homestead exemption on the budget, dealing and meeting with the property appraiser. If the state chooses not to fund it, that could wind up costing the board or the county about $425,000 a year. So I think right now with the contingency we got, that we're at a, at a, at a safe place to, to remain at nine mils. Anybody on board with that, or anybody of different? Mr. Clerk, board has, has decided to stay at nine mils. I need a motion.
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Fleming.
Who's second?
Second by Mr. Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some move.
Got a motion to adopt the resolution by Commissioner Richardson, approving the 2018 budget. I got a second. Got a second by Commissioner Hale.
Announce the number.
Chairman, the budget amount is 81,532,467 dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have it in front of me.
You said announce that and what else?
Definitely, just wanted the number.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll close budget hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a five-minute break between meetings?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break.
All right, thank you.
Where did that, Ms. Dana?
Ms. Dana.
Where did that leave our contingency?